Everything's run by technology nowadays.
Wow, it is 7:00 PM on March 14th, 2024. This is the Kaysville Planning Commission. We welcome you all here. Tonight, we will be hearing multiple items on the agenda. I'd like to go first. Do we have any conflicts of interest on the commission on any agenda items?
Not for me.
Okay. We'll move on. Our first item is a conditional use permit for an instructional home occupation for Sophie's Sunshine Preschool located at 10th South, 100 West.
Yeah, hang on one second. Yep, I'll tell you if we need you, I'll tell you to come on up. So, conditional use permit for Sophie's Sunshine Preschool located at 10th South and 10th West. It's on almost half an acre, and this is an instructional home occupation conditional use permit. So we have not done one of these for a while. Sophie, I believe this is her in-laws that live in the home in the blue, and she will be moving up in the summer. However, she will be doing a preschool in the, go to the next one, in this cute white garage to the side, west. We're currently working with fire department to get inspections and everything taken care with that. However, in the meantime, Sophie's got everything pretty much put together as far as in and outs with the preschool. As you can see in our report or in our staff report, she'll be doing preschool Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and she'll have two and a half hour set or two, two and a half hour sessions between 9:00 AM and 11:30, and then 12:30 and 3:00. And I think Monday and Wednesday, it's, she'll have two of them, and then on Tuesday, Thursday, just one session, right? So it won't be eight sessions, but there will be four, five, six. So, as you can see right here, she has done a really good job on her map with the arrows and everything for the in and out. The driveway is long enough. It seems to be, she's got it set up to be safe so that she can get the kids in and out from the preschool. She'll be waiting for them and then walking out with them so that they're not just taking off through the street. The parents are encouraged to pick up in front of the driveway and not on the, across the street to the north so that they're not running across the street, keep those little kiddos safe. And then, as you can see, she's got the arrows with the in and out on the direction. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Staff is recommending approval of Sophie Sunshine Preschool located at 10th South, 10th West with any conditions. Planning Commission fill are necessary and allowed. And then, as you can see in your, in your packet, there's findings for recommendation. With our instructional home occupation, it does allow for someone to come to your property and instruct, teach classes, lessons, if they are not the homeowner or the property owner. She does have consent to be doing the preschool there. And she's been reviewed by staff and is compliant with the state through the Utah Department of Commerce. So she is here tonight if you have any questions. But yeah, staff is recommending approval for Sophie's Sunshine Preschool.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant or of staff?
Not for me. Will?
Commissioners on the corner?
No, I don't think so.
I think we're, I don't have any questions.
I do not at all.
Okay. Then I think we could hear a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit for Sophie's Sunshine Preschool at 10th South, 100 West, per the findings in by the staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. We'll start voting with you.
That's a yea.
Aye.
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 Thank you. It passes. Staff will get back to you and move on from there.
Yeah, so I will send you an email letter approving the conditional use permit. And then we just talked about, since everything is complete, we'll do the business license from there. Thanks, Sophie.
So next item on the agenda is a rezone request and public hearing for approximately 1325 West, 200 North for Brandon Wood from G C General Commercial to R A Residential Agricultural. We had this one before us before. It's coming back because there's been some changes in the property, and we will turn the time over to staff.
All right. Thank you. Yes, so as indicated, we're actually, this property does not have an address with it, but it's located approximately 1325 West, 200 North. This is property located behind where the Ogden Clinic is being constructed at this moment. So there was a rezone application in 2019 to have this zone to General Commercial, and the Ogden Clinic entered into a development agreement on that rezone. It was approved. Since then, they've designed their building. They have adequate parking, and so this was an excess of land that they didn't need. So they have come to us, I think after some time of trying to have this on the market and coming in with some difficulties, they've, they've come to the conclusion they'd like to try and rezone that. We always want to look at kind of what exists around the area when we look at a rezone. So there is a variety of zoning. The property adjacent to the east is R A. Of course, to the north is General Commercial. That's where the Ogden Clinic is located. You have the rail line, and then there's our, the subdivision across the rail line that is R 120, is that? And then to the south is R 1 L D, which is just kind of a density that can't go over half an acre, one unit per, two units per acre. Anyway, the future land use map, I'm going to say this, I think this was a mistake. The future land use map indicates that this property would be used as single family. I don't think that was probably meant to be, but nonetheless, that's what it says. I think that probably was something where they just picked up that front parcel and had that showing as General Commercial and not the parcel behind it. It just, in my experience, it would make more sense that that's a mistake. Not that we would take General Commercial and plan to rezone it to single family. It just isn't something cities typically plan for. But again, nonetheless, it does say that it would be utilized as single family. So the front, or the setbacks for the zone that they've requested, which is R A, the agriculture residential zone, front setbacks are 30 feet, side yard, eight feet, rear yard, 30. There's a hundred foot frontage minimum at 50 feet from the front lot line, and the minimum lot size is 21,780 square feet, which is about half an acre. This property is just kind of an oddball because it doesn't have frontage. This is just a lot of record, hasn't ever been through a subdivision process. So then the question becomes, right, it's, it's challenging for Ogden Clinic to have this sold to someone as a commercial use because it doesn't have frontage. The utilities are located quite, or the parcel is quite a ways away from 200 North, and there's quite a grade change between the grade of 200 North and then the south end of that property is about nine feet, I think. So there's challenges with getting utilities back there, with having sewer service, without having to bring the grade of the property up. So they have come to the city again with this application to rezone it to R A. If this goes through, the, first of all, the council would have to amend the development agreement from 2019 and release this property from that agreement. But then the intent would be to have the property combined, let me go back to the map, but property would be combined with those, it'd be combined use, not necessarily a lot combination, but combined in conjunction with those or the existing residential property that's there. It's just two acres. So this would be three acres, and then frontage or access would have to come from Flint Street. So that's something we'd have to figure out through subdivision process. So we also want to look at what our general plan says when we consider a rezone. And this was a hard one because there really wasn't information either way in the general plan to tip those scales to either a recommendation or a denial. But there is one, one goal in there that just says, you know, that we want to keep the small town atmosphere. Returning that property to the agricultural residential would allow that property to be utilized the same as what's to the east of it. So that does fit in with keeping the cohesiveness of the neighborhood. We mailed out about 50 public notices, and we have not received any comments or emails about that. I think we did receive one phone call, and the person was just asking what was going on. And when he told me, it's like, okay. So again, this was, this is an odd one because I do like to provide a recommendation. But in this instance, right, our recommendation really should be based largely off of what that general plan says. And so the task for the planning commission this evening would be to look at those development impediments that exist and determine if those would overcome the viability of general commercial property enough to lose some of our commercial acreage back to residential. We do have the applicant here this evening as well as the property owner, so they can give you a better idea of the lengths they've gone to try and get that property marketed and sold as commercial. And that's all that I have. So I'll just turn the time over to the commission.
If the commission has no questions for staff, I would like to invite the applicant up to address the commission, and you have about 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Wood. That's kind of funny. We were here not very long ago asking you to zone this commercial. Now we're changing our minds a little bit. But so I actually represent as a real estate broker at the Ogden Clinic on their properties. And so when we realized we didn't need this back acre, you know, we were tasked with marketing it as commercial. But as we got into looking at the development costs, as Melinda said, it's, it's way below 200 North. I think it's about six feet below grade. So to get sewer and utilities and stuff, it's about, also about 750 feet off of 200 North. And so the cost, the cost to make it viable is more than what the property's worth. Not only that, but as we started marketing it, the uses that we were finding weren't great uses to, with the clinics, they would be accessing it through the clinic's parking lot, through their patients, you know. So we had, we had a few things. We had a daycare. We had some industrial kind of quasi uses, flooring companies. We had a couple of medical people look at it, but they didn't like how far back it was off the road in terms of frontage. And so the clinic determined they really wanted just to sell this as residential if they could and choose not to have a neighbor and just carve that off so they didn't have anybody coming through their site that, you know, once they sold it, they wouldn't be able to control who the next person was, and they might not like the next neighbor even if they liked the first neighbor. And so we went to go talk to the surrounding property owners to see if any of the adjacent owners would buy it. We met with Catherine Smith. She said, I don't want to buy it, but I might sell mine. So I went to go see her property to see if we could combine those and find somebody to buy it. And I kind of fell in love with it. It was kind of weird where now I'm buying Catherine's place and possibly this acre if you guys agree. My plan is just to remodel and add on to the existing old 1890s house right there. My deal with Catherine is that I have a deed restriction to where we can never do anything beyond what the R A zone allows, which, you know, I don't, I don't think I'm even going to subdivide it at this point. It's probably just going to be one house, one lot, three acres. And that deed restriction lasts for 35 years. So anyway, I have heard from, I know the city hasn't heard, but I've had a, you know, once you have your name on a sign on Facebook, I had a bunch of neighbors reach out just saying, hey, what's going on over there? And they seem to be really excited about the use, you know, this particular acre. Won't have anything on it. The house is all going to be up closer to Flint, to Flint Street where the existing home is. And so I completely get, being a commercial real estate broker, that cities are typically categorically opposed to rezoning from commercial to residential. I served on an economic development committee for Kaysville City back when we were figuring out what to do with the Smith's property and know the importance of having commercial property. But the likelihood, I mean, even if this stays and we found a way to overcome the costs, whatever we might find to go back there is really not going to provide much of an economic benefit to the city. And I think it's better off going back to residential on that back acre.
Any?
That's all I have.
Any questions for the commissioners for Mr. Wood?
So again, just the intent is to just rezone the property to the R A residential and combine it with the other lot and?
Combine it with Catherine's lot.
Not put any more houses on there? Just keep it as a large lot for that?
My, my, but the language with them is I can't do anything beyond what the, I can't ever, I can't come back for a rezone for 35 years. Not the city's acquiring it. That's my deal with Catherine because she wants to preserve the open space down there because it's really important to her.
Okay.
Yeah. And Kevin with the Ogden Clinic here, if you have any questions for him to, I don't know if you have any questions beyond?
Couldn't find anything else to do with it, huh?
We tried. We tried really hard.
Well, I mean, I'm sitting here looking at it. I mean, with, with that imbalance, I mean, you're, you'd, to get any sewer back there, you, you would have to put in a lift station. And you're, and you're looking, your, your cost in a lift station, several hundred thousand dollars.
We were close to half million before we even started.
Yeah, I mean, and the value of the property is about 400,000. So you're half million in, so you're 100,000 upside down already in your development costs just on the lift station. I mean, I think, you know, there, there's sometimes when you look at development, you're, you're kind of like, well, you know, what really makes sense here? I mean, yeah, you could pave over and put, you know, storage units back there. But then the accessibility issue for your, for your frontage becomes, you know, is that really the, the best intent for the property? I mean, I think you have to weigh that out, you know, taxable value and that present, future present value for the city. Is that really, is that really something that is, you know, present there? You know, also, you have to worry about drainage and storm drainage and those things. If you're having the issues that you're having, where do you put your storm water and such? I mean, I think, you know, from my, from my perspective, I mean, the argument, the argument for maintaining it as a residential ag, you know, particularly if you're going to put on a 35-year deed restriction, I think it, you know, 35 years from now, I don't think many of us who are in this going down.
I'm planning on being here.
I won't be on plan being here. I mean, you know, if we are, we'll probably be living, you know, rest home somewhere, but you know, or in St. George. But I think, I honestly think, I mean, it kind of is the best of all, all worlds. Unfortunately, there's not enough economic viability in the property to make it worthwhile developing. I mean, it's that easy, simple math, you know, development costs, cost of land, and then you get your return on investment back out.
So does that fall for the sewer that's going up to 200 North? Or out to Flint?
Correct. No.
Can you add to Flint?
Well, we'd have to go through Catherine's property, and she's not going to let anything go there.
You're not, yeah, that's true. You're not going to get, you're not going to get any.
That was plan two.
You're not going to get, you're not going to get an easement for stormwater or for sewer.
No. She's anti-development.
Yeah, I had, I mean, another community I worked in, we had the same thing. When the landowner passed, they finally got it done because the kids were more amenable to it. And now you've got 130 townhomes that have finally gone in behind, you know, some areas. So it, it takes time.
Yeah, her, her objective is to find somebody, me or another idiot like me, who will agree to keep it the way it is forever.
It's okay.
Search is over.
Well, it keeps you in the area.
Keeps me in the area. Yeah, I don't know if that's a good thing for everybody else, but yes.
This is, well, I don't think we have any further questions. This is a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing now. Anybody here who is here to speak on this matter, please come to the dais and state your name, and then we will hear, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Reed. I live directly east of a home on Flint Street, right across the street. So I look directly at the old home when I, outside of my driveway and the large pine trees. And forgive me, I'm a little hard of hearing. And so I may not have picked up on everything. So if we could just clarify a few things for me. So one of the things that we love about the area, and many people do, is the large pine trees that are right out in front by the street. And there's no curb and gutter in front of the home right now, which I don't really mind, except that when I try to turn into my driveway as I'm driving south, it stops everybody all the way back to the light because they can't go around me, right? But that doesn't really affect me, more affects them. But I did meet with somebody at the city, I'm sorry, in Public Works, and we talked about potential curb and gutter over there. And if you look at the drainage and the trees, the trees are right in the way of where the existing curb, to the, for the lot, to just to the south of it would run through. But as I looked at it, there is a nice way to meander a sidewalk between those trees and leave the trees without ever, you know, without taking them down. So for me, I didn't hear that addressed, and maybe it's too soon, but what becomes of the, the beautiful trees that are right out in front of the property? That's, that's one question. I'm sure curb and gutter will get dealt with eventually. But are we saying then that nothing's going to get built? We're just going to upgrade the home? Is that what I heard? That we're not planning on?
We, we can answer that question after the public hearing is closed.
Okay. Well, that's what I didn't hear, I guess, is what exactly what the use of the, I heard that there were difficulties with the grade being low and the sewer, you know, having to put a lift station potentially. But I didn't, I guess I just didn't understand what the goal was to, to do with the property. And then the home, to just modernize the home, upgrade the home, I guess I didn't quite get into that. So those were my questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Duane Klein, for the record. And my property touches the very back, the very corner of my property touches the property in question. So I appreciate the presentation tonight. I'm probably the one individual that did call and talk to the city and ask some questions. And no, I didn't email, and I, I could do that too. But understanding the purpose of the rezone to combine it with Catherine Smith's property, to me, makes a lot of sense. I appreciate what was said about the, the zoning and the, the idea to keep the feel of the small town and the transition. We've been concerned the whole time about the transition between the homes and the commercial property, you know, not being certain what Ogden Clinic was going to do with what's on the back there. To me, this, this proposal is, meets the, the needs or our concerns head on and is a great fit. I don't see, and especially after the discussion tonight, that piece of property already being commercially viable because of the distance off of 200 North. And I won't go into that again because I think everybody kind of understands where we're at on that. So I would just say we, we are in support of that zoning change, recognizing it's difficult or unusual from commercial back to residential R A or R A. But in this case, it really seems to be the right fit for, in our opinion. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Randy Clem, and I, I'm right east of the property, right next to Catherine Smith, between the Kaysville Bible Church and the, and Catherine Smith's property. And my, my property overlaps that back by maybe 20, 30 feet, you know, hits my property. And I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Brandon and I've talked a little bit on the phone. As long as it stays like it is, remodeling the house, I don't have a problem with that. But Brandon is a developer, and I don't want to see 10 years from now or five years, I probably won't be here 10 years. But, but anyway, we've, we've, we tried to buy the property from Catherine for years. And for whatever, she doesn't like us or whatever. But anyway, we've, our whole thing was to try to keep that normal or natural. And I'm fine with Brandon doing it, moving in next to me. I like the neighbors. But I just really felt that I need to make, make it very well known that it needs to stay the way it is. And so anyway, and that's what I've been told, and I hope he'll hold that to that.
Thank you. So will, anybody else here to speak to this? If not, we will close the public hearing and go back into regular commission business on this item. Any other questions or thoughts from staff or from commission?
I'll just, on the question about curb gutter and sidewalk, I think that's something the city always likes to see. We have kids that walk to school, that type of a thing. But that's not something that we would require unless or until the property was developed. So if it was to be a lot combination, I don't think we'd require that. If there were to be a subdivision and have it be subdivided into the six lots or whatever would be allowed, that point in time, we would require that sidewalk to be put in. But if nothing changes, the city wouldn't require that. Although I couldn't guarantee that in the future, we wouldn't fund a capital project to put sidewalk in. But typically, we like to wait until development occurs, and then that cost burden isn't on the city and the taxpayers, it's paid for by the developer. So the other questions, I think, are more for the applicant versus me. Were you able to hear that better? I know you said you had some?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can hear it. I just can't see because of the screen.
Oh.
I, I can hear that.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure.
And I, and I understand this isn't about all the developments that we're, but what I didn't understand was what was going to be done with the house and the, you know, I didn't, I didn't really hear what you had to say.
Yeah, and that's not something that the city really would regulate at all. That would be, as Mr. Wood explained, between the deed restriction from the seller to the buyer.
What, do you want to come back up and address that?
I just want to say, I, I would want to have trees out front. That's really a good thing to me. And I hope it not to, you know, curb and gutter, maintain the rural build. That's my attempt. And the house, I'm still trying to figure out how much I can save and how much I can add on. Like, I don't know yet, but I'll say it's unfortunate the house, but it would be a lot of new house to.
Cool. Thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts, questions, or?
Kind of unusual because normally we're.
Going the other way.
Yeah, going the other way. This is kind of backtracking, so. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just think it's interesting. It's, you know, circumstance.
Oh, yeah. My concern was, I mean, look at the map and now understanding, like, you know, how does somebody access that property now that they're going to be, Brandon's going to be buying that front half? I mean, that's, you don't want to get a position where you're selling a property somebody can't access. But also, the, the economic viability of it for commercial doesn't make sense. Occasionally, you run into this. And I think, I think, you know, our zoning has to be flexible to be, allow for the, for this type of stuff. And, you know, we have to be able to allow for that as long as the conditions are there.
I feel comfortable with it in that I think it's a pleasant piece of property. It's pleasant for the trail. It's pleasant for the neighbor residents and not viable for, you know, the use that the city's looking for, which is the commercial. I think it's a good solution.
Yeah, I mean, to, to the question of it being commercial, being zoned commercial and then going back the other way, that property just doesn't lend itself to commercial development very well. It would be expensive.
Yep.
You know, and one thing that I also meant to say was, I think it's a fair argument that Ogden Clinic and the applicant can make that the terms of that development agreement were satisfied, right? They, they promised a clinic. That's what they're delivering. So there, there wasn't in that agreement, the, you know, and of course, agreements can always be amended. But there wasn't in there that the entire acreage would have to be developed commercially, right? They just were saying, we want to, we want to do a clinic. And then, of course, as you get further down the line, you have the footprint of the building and the parking required, and there's this excess property.
Yes, you say, I mean, this doesn't take away from their ability to park and, and?
Not at all.
Not at all. Okay. Because, because, I mean, that's always concerning. I mean, are you, you were not viable, but it's also not developable. Are they still able to be parked enough on that property and have the access? Because what you, what you don't want to see is like them having to intrude maybe over the neighbors or parking on the street, you know? Because they will be busy. They're a busy clinic. It's why they're expanding. Okay. Any other thoughts? If so, I'd be willing to hear a motion.
Chair, make a motion to recommend to the city council that they, that they approve the request to rezone the property located at, let's see if I get the address of this right, approximately. 1325 West 200 North, 1.09 acres, from the current general commercial zone to the RA zone.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And we'll start the voting with me. I vote aye.
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 Thank you, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the next item, which is number five. Conditional use permit for electronic message center for Charlie's Car Wash, located at 331 400 West. I'd just like to take a second and say, I'd like to open this one up for public comments, I'd like to have a motion and a second, and then vote on that, because there have been some impacts. If there's anybody here to speak, I'd just like to have them give just a couple minutes of public comment for that, if anybody's here for that, in this, in this one. Since the sign's already been erected, I'd just like to make sure that we pick up any public comment if people are here for that. So I'd just like to have a motion for that and a second, and then vote on that.
Okay, I can make a motion for public comment.
I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Thank you, we'll just vote together. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. We'll move on to staff.
All right, this one's mine, I guess. This is conditional use for a sign, that's EMC, they are required to have conditional use. I, I missed that. This one is 300 feet, more than 300 feet from, or more than, all right, let me just go through it real quick. Our sign, our sign ordinance is as follows, that if they are over 300 feet from the freeway, they can be allowed to be 30 feet tall. If they are in a highway, I'm saying I-15. The sign may be 1.5 square feet from the front edge, up to 200 square feet, and then, and this is coming from 1739, signs permitted by Zona. Now allowable EMC, or electronic messaging center, we call them, the size cannot exceed the 50% of the allowed sign and 75% of the cabinet. So all that means is, the sign is over the 300 feet to get to the, to the 45, so they are well within 3,000 feet, so their sign can be 30 feet high, which it is. Their sign could be up to 200 square feet, and their sign could be 50%, or 75, no more than 75% cabinet and 50% of the 200 feet to be the EMC. And what they have installed is 30 feet in height, so that meets the 3,000 feet from the freeway, right away, I guess. They're four foot six back of the leading edge, they're only 80 feet in size, so they could be up to 200 or 80 feet, and they could been 100 square feet of the sign, and we are at 40 square feet, so they're way below the sign that could be allowed there. Our sign code has some conditional uses, or conditionals, that they can recommend that you look into for findings on the signs. And the sign does meet all the height setback size. The conditions that impose could have detrimental effects and impact surrounding areas, and they limit that to what we can actually do, and they have that EMC shall not cause glare or rapid blinking, nor intense lighting so that it creates a nuisance or hazard to vehicular traffic, pedestrians, adjacent properties, and signs are capable of being programmed automatically to dim the ambient conditions. Our conditional use will allow for us to put conditions on the time, the size, the setbacks, and that's about what we can put conditions on, and still stay within our ordinance. They have made a, Charlie's has made a, after they found out that they were causing trouble, they have cut their hours, I believe, to where they is running their brightness from the ambient light, and to try to create the, or to mitigate the complaints we had, and I think they have, because we haven't had any more complaints since, since he done what he, what he did. I guess that's about what I got to wrap up, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Dan, what are their hours of operation that they've gone to currently, do you know?
I believe they still are running that, but I drove by at nights, and it's way, it's dimmed down as low as there's regular sign that says car wash on it, you know, they have, they have the, whatever you call the, the plastic with the neon behind it, and it seems like when I drove by every time I have, that the part that could go bright has just been the same even kill as, you can tell where they stopped and started, so. So I don't know what percentage of ambient lighting that is above whatever, but most, I've done some calling around today and yesterday, and most cities will regulate 3%, some go to 4%. Our thing has no percentage that we regulate, but, but I think he's well within what he's, if he's staying with whatever the sign is that would light up anyway, and everybody else around there.
Perfect, thank you. Does staff, any, or does commissioners have any questions or staff?
How long's the sign been in operation?
I think that's been in there for a month or two, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If I can just add a couple things, so, I'm not sure what happened with the PowerPoint presentation, because I actually modified some of the conditions on the recommendation, and they are not there. But that said, our, our code allows us to regulate size, setback, and height, that's already all predetermined because the sign's constructed. So while the commission could say, all right, we don't want this to be 30 feet tall, we want it to be 15 feet, we're asking that the commission have those conditions as the sign currently exists, so that there's no expense to the city to correct the mistake of overlooking the conditional use permit before the permit was issued and, and the sign was constructed. Our code is, once again, it's not well-written. The code requires that the electronic message center signs be capable of being dimmed, but it doesn't say to what percent it would have to be dimmed, as Dan was saying, we don't have a regulation on how bright they can be. So while it has the capability of being programmed to dim at certain times, we cannot legally require a condition of having it dimmed to 30% or whatever, because our code doesn't allow us to regulate the brightness. That's obviously something that we need to change going forward, but my thoughts with that are, if the applicant is amenable and agreeable to having us impose that condition, then we could include that as a condition. If push comes to shove, though, right, the city really couldn't enforce that regulation just because it's not in our code. That said, as well, we, shoot, I just lost what I was going to say. So, okay, that said, really what we're left with, because the sign's already existing, is the hours of operation. So that is something to consider. We did receive complaints from the townhomes that are across Main Street as to the brightness, and I should say by we, it was council members that then relayed those complaints to me. So there has been an impact of this sign to the community, which is one of the reasons why we felt like it would be appropriate for members of the public to speak if they are here this evening. I do want to compliment Charlie for his responsiveness to our requests and dimming the sign. He agreed, or just set the time, sign to dim at, to 75% at 6:00 PM, I think. We have done a little bit of research since that time, and most cities, first of all, regulate the amount of lumens, which, again, we'll need to fix, but most cities require that dimness at dusk or with ambient lighting to go to 25 or 30%. We looked at one that was 40%, which is on the high end, so that said, 75% is probably still a little bit high compared to what other cities regulate, but that would really be more informational for us going forward as we amend the code to include those requirements. But we just wanted to mention that. And then, of course, I do believe, is Charlie here this evening? Okay, he is here. So any questions for the applicant, obviously, you can inquire of him.
Well, I'd like to hear from the applicant, if we can, but before we do, Melinda, when you said it doesn't allow us to regulate brightness, I mean, there is a provision in the ordinance that, and first, let me say, I agree, it is not well-written, but it does say that light shall, a lighted sign shall not be installed to permit lights to penetrate beyond the property in such a manner as to annoy or interfere with the use of adjacent properties.
Yes.
When it's, when that's alleged, then the building official can investigate, and if such light is determined to be in violation, the owner of said light shall take appropriate corrective action as directed. So, I mean, it kind of implies that we can do something about brightness, but the problem is, we don't have any standards. It's kind of like shooting from the hip, so.
Yeah, there's a vague, there's a vagueness in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make that statement.
Why don't we hear from the applicant, and then we'll move forward from there.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Hunsaker, I'm the one that owns that lovely car wash there. This all kind of came as a surprise to me, I thought I'd gone through all the permitting and everything necessary, and this came up after the fact. Had no intention of, you know, making someone's life miserable or anything like that, and I think we've rectified it to some degree and have, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. And so I, you know, I'm not, I brought the manager of the car wash with me, and he's technically a lot more savvy than I am as to how that sign works and what happens with it, I just, we have a sign there, and the people came and put it up and left, and without many adjustments or any adjustments to it, really. And then we heard that there was problems actually before I heard from the city, and we were in the process of, to be honest with you, figuring out how to rectify it. And it's really not that complicated to do it, just somebody that knew how to run the computer better than I did. So anyway, we have basically got it, so I, actually, Miles, she helped me out here.
When is it dimmed down? It's basically...
Yeah, go ahead.
It comes to me.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up, Lyle. And just so you can, what percentage are you dimming it down?
I think to about 25, maybe even down to 15. I know it gradually goes down over the night.
I mean, all we're looking for is just to have the sign, I'm not trying to, you know, somebody awake all night or causing any problem or anything like that, just so that they can see it. And during the day, you need, with the ambient light around, you need a little bit brighter, so it goes up. It's good to know that the technical guy here is quite as good as he thinks he is.
So we currently have it at 100 from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and then at 5:00 PM, it goes all the way down to 70, 6:00 PM goes to 40, and then 7:00 to 9:00 PM, we're about 25. And then from then, goes all the way down, 5%, and then up until 6:00, 6:00 AM, that's when it starts gradually going up.
Goes down to 5%?
5% after 10:00 PM.
That's pretty good. Okay.
Perfect. Any other questions?
No, I don't think so, not for me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So while we're at this point, we'll open it up, anybody here for, anybody here wants to come up publicly on this, we'll invite them up. You have a couple minutes? State your name, miss.
Abby Hunt, it's weird to be on this side. Just here, because I did speak with a resident, I was, I worked with kind of a resident on this, and just, you know, he said that after 10:00 it was turned off, so maybe that's what it looks like at 5%, so maybe that's acceptable, but it was quite bright, but it sounds like they're working to fix it, so just wanted to make sure that, I guess, his concerns were heard. Yeah, I know you guys will do a great job, and it's all good, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Abby, you don't know whether the person who was complaining, was complaining about even after it had been turned down to 5% or...
I spoke with them when we had kind of talked back and forth, saying maybe it'll be turned off at 10:00, and, well, I didn't speak with them, I messaged them, and, and he indicated that at 11 o'clock, when he was looking out his window, that it was not on.
Oh, okay.
So maybe it was off that night, maybe it was 5%, I can't be sure, but so after, yeah, after some of these mitigating factors were implemented, it seemed to be better for him, and he's in, he's in the, what are those, the townhomes kind of across Main Street, so.
These are the ones in the north by the, the mortuary.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, if there's nobody else here to do the public comment, I will close our public comment on this. Commissioners or staff, anything else we need to fill in? Any other comments?
Just a question of staff, Dan or Melinda, what, do you guys have a recommendation of what the sign lighting ought to be? I mean, you heard what they're doing, is that sufficient, you think, or...
I think it sounds fantastic, and once again, just want to let them know, from my perspective, I know the residents appreciate it, but I appreciate the responsiveness that they have had, so I think that sounds, and of course, I think, you know, in the summer months, you may want to adjust some of that. You know, maybe to come on a little brighter earlier and stay on a little brighter later, but it seems to me that the complaints from the residents have been satisfied, so that does sound reasonable to me.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I guess my question is, because it sounds like a very nice neighbor, he's trying to be very reasonable and responsive there. I guess the question I have is, is there, is there something we should be setting in place as far as, I mean, obviously, right now, they're just taking care of it in kind of a good faith situation, but do we need to set some sort of restrictions or requirements so that that's...
I, I think we probably, I mean, I wrote down their percentages, I think we just put their percentages into the use...
Into it, yeah.
And we just say, you know, from 10:00 to 4, sorry, from 10:00 AM to 1600 hours, it's at 100%. At 5:00 PM, it goes to 70%, 6:00 PM, it goes to 40%, and 7:00 to 9:00, it goes, 7:00, 9:00 PM, it's 25%, 10:00 PM, it goes the...
But that might change, is the...
Exactly.
Yeah, I was going to say, in the summertime, they...
So you may want to...
They'll probably want to keep that brighter.
You may want to do it as per the summer arrangement.
It just, it's, again, it's a sign, so it's, people, light outside and stuff like that, it needs to be a different brightness than this dark. And technologically, it's nice that it'll do that, so we can keep that adjusted, but to set it a specific time of day to make that, doesn't make a lot of sense to do that.
So I would maybe tie it to like sunset.
Yeah, you can tie it to sunset or something like that, like a couple hours or an hour or two. like a couple of hours or an hour or two after sunset or whatever, those things or sunrise.
Perfect.
That makes sense, but as far as time of day...
Yeah, because time, it's going to, it's going to shift. And depending on what Congress does with daylight savings time.
It's not going to be dark till 9:00, 9:30 at some point here, and it's going to be dark, you know, when daylight savings, that kind of thing. Just, it's not as easy as that.
No, it's fine. I was just trying to find out how we, how we do this.
I guess the thing I'd ask a little bit would be, those percentages, I'm, no offense, not running around at 2:00 in the morning to see what everything is either. And that's probably best for us. But the intention, again, is just, at night, just they could see the sign, but nothing...
That it's dimmed enough. It's dimmed enough, it's not intrusive.
Right, it just looks like the rest of the signs around at that stage. And there's other electrical signs like that in the area. And just, so it's no brighter than they are. It's all I'm shooting for. Like I say, initially, the guy that put it in just turned the rascal on and left.
Is the car wash closed at all, or is it open 24 hours?
You wouldn't want it open 24 hours. I wouldn't want it open 24 hours. No, it's, what are we, like? 7 to 8 in the summer.
Oh, okay.
And then, I think we're in 7 to 7 in the winter, isn't it? Something like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
So, recommendation, I'd probably tie it to sunset.
Yeah.
So, let's legislate from the bench.
I, you know, I'm... I don't know, the morning concerns me a whole lot. They, what time do you power up again? 6:00 o'clock?
Yeah, I think, I think it's that evening.
Six, didn't.
Yeah, I think so, like from 6:00 until sunset, it can be full power. And then, from...
From sunset.
What?
Sun, dusk.
Maybe two, uh, from sunset to till, until 2 hours after sunset, it would be...
40.
What is, is it 40? Is that your next one that you? And then, and then at 2, uh, more than 2 hours after sunset until 6:00 AM, it goes down to 5%.
Well, he's got it.
Then it, well, it'll be adjustable, say, you know, after, you know, after, um, operate, closing operations, that it's able to adjust from 25% to 5% in the, when you reopen.
Yeah.
So, how do we, how do we craft a motion?
It would be a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the following condition.
Okay.
To mitigate the, the lighting. Not, what am I trying to think? Not, not hazard, it's not a lighting hazard.
No, it's not a hazard.
It's a lighting nuisance.
But we'd want it to, so, continue with your motion.
Um, all right, yeah. So, I would, I would move that we approve the conditional use permit for electronic message sign for Charlie's Car Wash at 1331 North 400 West with the following conditions to mitigate the lighting nuisance. From 6:00 AM until sunset, the sign can operate at 100%. From sunset until 2 hours after sunset, or, well, or do we want to tie that to closing?
However...
Uh, from sunset till 2 hours after sunset, it would be 40%. And from more than 2 hours after sunset until 6:00 AM, 5%.
Perfect, Abby, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I just want to mention that he does have like a 25% drop before it goes to the 5%. Looks like it's 40% at sunset. Then, a couple of hours, it drops. Are we giving him enough leeway, is what I'm asking?
So, allowing him to titrate it?
In the winter, that's probably necessary. In the summer...
Summer, it might not be, yeah.
We just want to give you enough leeway to be able to operate. I don't want to be, you know, the head, you know...
In the winter, it's, you know, sunsets...
5:00, about 5:00.
Yeah. So, you would...
For 2 hours right after.
Yeah, I think you would at least want that 25%.
Sunset and/or close.
Okay, yeah, that would work.
I can kind of maybe give just a little insight right here, because I've been doing, looking at, most of them just go off the ambient light, which is outside at the time.
Yeah.
And then, they do percentage. So, it'll just follow the ambient lights, which, I don't know if time's the best way to do it or just, you know, that's basically all theirs says is, they take the light, and if it's kind of light, you can have it kind of bright. And if it's kind of dark, you have it kind of, you know, they just take a percentage of the ambient light that's existing outside.
I mean, are you capable of doing that, or?
Yeah, I think, I think we want to be, we want to be as flexible as we can. So, let's amend in sunset and/or closing.
Sure, that'd be fine.
In your motion. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Can you, can you repeat the motion for our lovely gal here who does the minutes?
Our scribe needs more direction.
And then...
Clarification.
I, I'm just going to give a suggestion as well, because, again, legally, we, we can't regulate the brightness or the dimness. It's the hours of operation. And so, you may want to, instead of like 5% at sunset, you may just want to say it has to turn off at sunset. It may look the same, but, but that would be a condition that, as the code is written, we could enforce. I don't know if that makes sense. We just can't, we, we can't regulate the...
Dimness.
We require the capability, but we don't.
And this is just for the EMC part. So, the, the part that it stays illuminated at night. So, we're only regulating...
The top part that says, kind of has the running. That's just a static sign, yeah, that's absolutely correct. We can't regulate the hours of operation of that, only the EMC portion. So, um, so what I've noticed in the evening then is that, that EMC has been less bright, but the Charlie's Car Wash portion has stayed. And, and maybe that is also dimming as well. But we can only regulate the hours of operation on the EMC portion, as I would read the code.
In fairness, though, all the other lights, the EMC lights around there are on all night.
Are they?
Yeah. And I say, I'm more than happy to turn it down, so it's not bright, but it's, it is advertising. And there are a few people going around, and that's, that's not fair. You know, I'm more than happy to turn it down, but to just...
To turn it off.
Put that sign out, because it doesn't make a lot of sense.
That's a good point. If like the subway signs on all night.
Yeah, it would just be, it would just be the digital portion.
And the digital signs like that are on all night.
All night. Because we didn't require that of the subway sign when they came.
Yeah.
See, I, I know what you guys are trying to do, and it's fine. I get that.
Sure.
Also, from my perspective, I'm trying to be, I want to do what's right, too.
Yeah.
That side isn't necessarily fair to me.
Yeah, that's a good point. And if you're good with 5%, I'm good with 5%.
I just, I just need somebody to be able to read that, hey, the car wash is open or it's closed, or whatever it says at night. It doesn't have to be...
Come back tomorrow.
Yeah, there you go. We're asleep. But anyway, that's, yeah, I think that's, that's fair.
How do we put that in the motion, then? What is that?
What you have.
Whatever he says.
What we have.
Right, so, can you read that out again, or?
Since I can't, since I can't make the motion.
No, no, but you have the motion.
So, hours of operation, that would be 100% from opening from 6:00 AM until...
Sunset.
Sunset.
Until sunset.
And then, 2 hours after sun, from sunset till 2 hours after sunset.
Or closing.
And/or closing. It would drop to 70%.
40%.
40%.
40%.
And then, it would go to 25 from 40, 25, and then 5% overnight.
For, yeah. The 25% would be until 10:00 o'clock?
10:00 o'clock.
And then, after 10:00 o'clock, 10:00 o'clock till opening again would be 5%.
Till opening would be 5%.
And I think most of those special signs, because they're going to be at least 25, 30% per blown long that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is, it is less.
So, now that we have the motion amended...
Yep.
And seconded, we ready for a vote?
Sure.
Okay, Aaron?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, thank you for your flexibility. We're here for condition, we're here for number 6, which is conditional use permit for electronic message center signed for Deseret Landing, located at 559 South Deseret Drive. We'll do staff report, then we'll have you come up.
All right, this one here's on 7 acres. They have 3,000, 350,000, 355 square feet. They're right along the freeway. They're like within 125 of the, 125 feet of the right-of-way, I guess. And they got the 2 buildings block in front of a face, frontage on the, on the desert line, uh, drive. And I was looking at the sign from there, picking up the sign today, and I couldn't even see it. So, I don't think the issues, we had any residential issues with it. The placement of the sign where it is within location, it can be 45 feet tall, which it is. The sign could be up to 300 square feet. And then, it can be a 50% of the 300 square feet. They actually have the sign at 45 feet. They need a minimum of 18 feet, or 18 inches from the face. They got that. Um, they had 238 square feet of the sign, 147, which is less than 50%. And so, they're well, all within the allowed requirements for what they could be at. Again, and we're just here for the EMC portion. And I guess we're at the same place we was. This is, um, that's what I got.
Well, thank you, Dan.
So, the sign, does the sign is on Deseret Drive?
The sign's actually right on the rear of the lot. And according to site plan, it's like 20 feet plus the part of the, uh, the parking stall. So, there's quite a bit of distance. They only need 18. The side, this, the sign is 14 feet. So, it's right, and right against the freeway, is basically what I'm saying.
Oh, it is against the freeway.
The sign is on the north end of the parcel, and it is to the east. So, it butts up to the rail line, basically.
So, this faces are, is visible from the freeway?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, it really is...
How is that different from being a billboard?
Well, because they're advertising for the...
On premise.
Businesses, there's 2 buildings on the site, so they're advertising...
And you've got all the others.
Yeah, they're advertising for the, the buildings on that parcel.
And we're sure that that's all they're going to advertise?
Well, if they...
And I say that because I have in my experience seen where signs like this have been approved, and then they start advertising things that are not on the property.
And if they do, we will...
Yeah.
We will tell them that that's not allowed. But, you know, there's Gigi PIP, there's Orange Theory, there's a few other businesses over there. So, they're all in the same parcel, so they would be allowed to, to advertise for those differing businesses. Yeah, if they started advertising for Boondocks, we wouldn't allow that, because it's off-premise.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, is it, I drove over there to see the sign, and I couldn't get to the sign. So, my question is...
Maybe you were on the property to the north.
Do you want me to indicate or discuss?
Well, I could, I, I feel like I got to the commercial properties, but to get behind there, like you can drive back by climate. I couldn't get back behind Boondocks, and then, it was just residents. It's all, I mean, maybe I just missed something, but my question is... Is it visible from the residences there?
Well, we haven't had any complaints.
Otherwise.
So, I can't answer that question. I mean, I don't know. Um, those residents to the south are about 500 feet away. The, the, you know, the building height is 35 feet, the sign's 45 feet. I think it would be visible. Now, whether it's bothersome is a different story. But we haven't received any complaints.
And, and I, and I'll say this, when you move next door to a commercial enterprise, you expect a little bit of... I, I lived on Main Street in Bountiful. We had a townhome, and we had a commercial enterprise next door. There's a little bit of that jostling that goes on.
So, this is where the sign is located. So, I came in on the south entrance, drove all the way around, and took some photos of the sign from right here. It is fenced off from, this is the Young Truck and Trailer Property. So, there is a fence between the 2 properties. But you can see here, there's what, 1, 2, 3, 4? You know, there's several different units in there, so...
Yeah, it's good, it's good flex space.
Yeah. But yeah, it's, it's located at the northeast end of the property. And then, as we mentioned, right, the, the rail line is right here, and then, of course, I-15. So, um, it, you know, it is, it is valid concern about having more of a billboard-type advertisement. But that's just something that, you know, if that does happen, then we address and let them know that that's not legal.
Okay. Let's, if we're there, do we want to hear, let's hear from the applicant for a minute?
Yeah.
Sure.
Come on up.
My name's Eric Cheney. I'm a representative from YESCO. Um, so, we're the manufacturer of the pylon sign and the installer. Um, so, I'm just here to answer any questions and see how I can be of help.
Um, is your sign controlled, like for, does it dim electronically and such?
Yeah, so, I didn't want to interject into the other conversations. So, this mess, there, there's different varieties of electronic message centers out there, different qualities. This one has the capability and is run by Samsung. It's a Samsung unit. So, their team, it has what's called a photo cell on it, so...
Oh, so it's automatic?
Right, it's automatic. It's automatically controlled. So, offhand, I don't know what the percentages are. He, he apparently knew, because he had to go manually program them all. So, these are controlled, but the developer wants to play fair in the sandbox. And if, if there's any complaints, we can, you know, we're happy to, to adjust and do anything we need to, so.
Okay.
Is that on all the time? There's no off time?
Yeah, so, it's been running, as, as far as I know, 24/7.
Okay.
And you say we've got, there's been no complaints?
No, it just, we just noticed when, I mean, it, I will say this, that when it, when it, when I noticed it, it was pretty bright. But, you know, that was maybe more like 7-ish. And then, I think, at a later point in time, And then I think at a later point in time, my husband and I drove past it south on I fifteen, and it didn't seem to be as bright.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So that was later in the evening.
It's not obtrus, it's not obtrusive.
Yeah.
And, and the times I've been on I fifteen, I don't drive I fifteen much anymore because now I have my own private freeway on the west side. But when I, when I go down I fifteen, I, you laugh. I, I, I notice, I, I notice the signs have gone up because that, that whole complex is developing out, and it's a great complex, but your sign is not obtrusive.
It was smartly located because they could have put this at the south end of the parcel. This would be a different look, a different conversation.
Yeah, but you're, you're getting what, you're probably getting a half a million.
Yeah, and then, you know, another thing to, that I think comes into play here as well is that sign height is forty-five feet, and it's counterintuitive, but that extra height leaves it out of your lines of your windows and your view from your home. Whereas the Charlie's Car Wash sign was only at thirty feet, and that's going to be in the direct line of sight in the windows going into the homes. So I, I think there's a difference there with that as well, and, you know, Dan had mentioned, like, it may be, the view of that sign may be obstructed by the building, and the building's ten feet shorter, so I think it's still probably visible, but just not bothersome.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions for?
I don't think so.
Just, just to answer your question, so as it's sold and as it was related to the developers, all products and services that are sold on that specific parcel are to be advertised, and nothing outside of that.
Right.
So no Coca-Cola, no, no Lagoon.
Well, and I know, I mean, you're, you're representing the sign company, so you're just kind of concerned with the sign. The owner is the one who's going to decide what they put on that sign.
And, I mean, and it reflects on us, right? It reflects on the way that we, we sell our signs. So, uh, you know, it was related to him, and, and everything that I've seen that he's advertised has just been Gigi PIP, you know, products and services on that.
The reason I raise that, Melinda and Dan, is because in my career, I have had very, uh, I've had great jousting battles with advertising companies.
Oh, I have, I have too.
And if there is a sign on the freeway that is advertising off-premise businesses, you can bet we're going to hear from some of these sign companies saying, you don't allow billboards, and yet you're allowing the sign to do that.
Yeah.
And the reason I raise it as well is, I'm not going to implicate the business, at least not publicly here, but I have seen at least one of our electronic sign, message signs here in the city advertising stuff that was not on the premise. And I just thought, man, that has the real potential to get us into trouble.
Well, yeah, exactly, and, and essentially, right, like those large billboard companies, they pay attention. And so they, I mean, the previous municipal day I worked for, I think through some litigation, we had come to an agreement with one company, and then the other company said, came and said, hey, we want the same deal. And, you know, we had to work through that as well. But you bring up a very excellent point, and I, I can say, right, like FICOM, Mammoth, Saunders, right, they pay attention. So if there is some advertising that goes on over there that's off-premise, we'll probably hear from them first versus a citizen or somebody complaining about it.
The, the legal implications aren't as broadly understood, so... Okay. If there's no further questions by staff, from staff or from the commission, are we ready for a motion?
I'll motion to approve the conditional use permit for the electronic message center sign for Deseret Landing at five hundred and fifty-nine South Deseret Drive.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Will you make the second as per recommended by staff?
As recommended by staff.
Thank you. Cool. I'll start, we'll start the voting with you, Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I should volunteer my services to you. I spent a lot of time on signs.
So I went to high school with Dewey Reagan.
I mean, that's like a six-month project full-time. I'm not kidding, right? Like, it's, of all the land use code in the world, the one that I like the least...
Is signs?
Is signs.
So I, I, I'll tell you, the first time I met Wilf was I put in, I got the, this is a toll side, but I got the right of, or the scenic byway up in Morgan, and we connected to Salt Lake County. They said, call Will Summercore, and so I called Will. The only pushback we got was from Reagan Signs.
Yep.
Because they, we, they saw that we were putting that entire right-of-way out of commission for future signs because once you would do a scenic byway, it's permanent, and, and you're undoing all, any potential for future signage on those roadways.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're driving in the mountains in a scenic byway, who wants to see, you know, a barbis all ad?
I'll just tell you a little anecdote. When I was at Salt Lake City, the city's ordinance was not in real good shape either, and we hadn't done a lot of work on it yet. And we all, we all came to work on a Monday morning, and over the weekend, several of the existing billboards in the city had been converted to electronic. And we maintained that electronic billboards were not allowed in the city. And they basically stood on saying they were not, they were not putting electronic billboards up per se. They were doing maintenance on existing. And we were hard-pressed because of the way our ordinance was written to refute that.
Their attorneys had read your ordinance.
And they, that, boy, did that cause consternation.
Those billboard companies have a very strong, powerful presence up at the state capitol with lobbying. I mean, they pay, right, it is a huge industry, and so they, they paid, paid to have those, those lobbying. In fact, there was just a bill up at the state legislature about the scenic byways. And the, somehow, there was a committee to decide, right, which scenic byways would be designated.
You have a committee for each.
There's a committee through the Utah, through the Tourism Bureau.
Right, and they, they wanted to include a member of the sign, the billboard representatives on the committee.
And they're going to vote no every time. And it has to be unanimous vote on that committee.
But they did, they wound up taking that off.
Yes, yeah, the bill was amended to remove that from the committee.
That committee now, those committees now only recommend the legislature makes the final approval on the designation. I've heard from Ralph Becker and his wife Kate, who runs Scenic Utah.
Yeah.
And they're basically saying it was, it was, they're maintaining that it was a end-around because the billboard companies have a lot of influence at the state legislature.
Yeah, you're never going to see another scenic byway.
Yeah.
We, I mean, we've gotten several of these through, and it goes through that committee, and it's sacrosanct. You, you don't undo them. You know, when I'm coming down Highway one fifty there out of the Uintas, I really want to see us, you know, looking at Mirror Lake. I really want to come up over Mirror Lake Highway as I'm trying to look out towards Mountain Tempanogus and that view that way, and look out east over towards Kings Peak. I really want a billboard there. Lit up all night. There, anyway, yeah.
Okay. I should help you.
Well, Mindy did say that we have it on record that you volunteered your time, so... You know, it, it, it's a challenge because our code is super basic.
Yeah.
And sometimes that's good, but really, a lot of times it's not. And, you know, I just, Casville just doesn't have the bandwidth and the staffing and resources to keep up with code. And even changes at the state legislature or case law, right? Because several years ago with Gilbert versus whatever, there was... Yeah, Gilbert, okay, Gilbert versus Arizona, right, there was a case law that came out and changed the whole face of what you can and can't regulate as far as signs. It, which was like you can't impede someone's First Amendment right to, right? So we can't, we can't regulate political signs. We can't look at the content. We can't.
As long as you're consistent, it's time, place, and manner.
Right, and, and not content, right? So, and, and, so, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a very complex issue, topic. And, you know, and really, I think, like, there's, I'd hire a consultant to do it unless I had, like, you know, someone like Wilf or Steve to really go through that, right? But it's, it's even, you know, like, we, we spent in Murray when I was there. We spent, I think, four or five months redoing our sign code. And within a couple of months of doing that, and that, and that was based off of the case law with Gilbert versus Arizona. But within a couple of months of doing that, we realized all sorts of issues that existed with a sign that just had been missed. And, you know, and it is, it's a very complex topic and controversial and highly politically influenced.
There's a lot of money, I was going to make the comment to him, how many views a day do you think that sign gets? I mean, on a heavy traffic day, you're probably looking at half a million views. Seriously, I mean, you know, you think about eyeballs that go up and down I fifteen. On, on a slow traffic day, you're probably looking at quarter million. That's a quarter million people have the potential to see that and say, oh, well, I want to go play pickleball. Or I need to go, and I want to stop there on my way home and go do that. I mean, that, that, there's a powerful message there in signage. That you, you, radio is about number two. Signs, signs of radio go back and forth still in advertising. There's a huge amount of money in those mediums because of that. Okay. Cool. Number seven. Staff, let's hit it.
I think that's mine, too. And this is a public hearing for tax amendment to Title seventeen twenty-four, central commercial and its conditional uses. And we... Huh? And then what it is, is that number four, we had dwellings as a conditional use in central commercial, and staff just feels that that's... We have real limited, uh, commercial, and we shouldn't allow for dwellings to be built on the limited commercial we have left in the central commercial district.
Well, we have another option now where we can do an overlay zone as well.
As you say, what about mixed-use overlay? Is that an option?
If we do the mixed use, then, then you could.
Okay.
But just the commercial or the conditional use as dwellings, we have that in there.
Yeah, and you can, you can overlay the, the mixed-use zone over the central commercial, right?
And they still could do that.
Yeah.
But we're not losing a whole hundred percent of that.
Yeah, right.
The commercial.
Yeah, you're getting, and actually, for, and taxable value-wise, you're still getting actually higher taxable value per, 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 per square foot when you do that mixed use because even with that piece, I mean, if we redevelop, if you did a redevelopment and you've got that great eye doctor down there, if they, if they ban that, you want to redevelop that, and you brought business in there, and even with commercial, residential on that, your redevelopment cost, even on top of that, you're, you'll probably double the amount of taxable value on that property alone. And, I mean, that's great for cities. I mean, instead of tearing it down and starting over, but mixed use in that, in that type of environment is great because you get the commercial use on the bottom and potential overlay with the, with the residential over the top. I mean, I, I think we, you know, we don't want to limit ourselves. We also don't want to start adding more dwellings into the site. I mean, I'll go back to the legislature. Legislature was trying to incentivize getting a few, or was it last? Yeah, it was twenty twenty-three, when they were trying to incentivize cities to do away with commercial and add more residential. And I just think, you know, we don't want to be top-heavy on, we want to have more commercial because we want to offset our tax base that we, you know, I, I'd rather pay less taxes.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that this doesn't limit any opportunity to do a mixed use.
Correct.
Right. And that, so that would make me be favorable to this change. Because if we do see a benefit in doing some kind of a dwelling mixed use, we, we have the option.
See, Ogden's found this very favorable in their Twenty-Fifth Street and other areas where they bring in mixed use, and then they get... I mean, Tom Christoflis goes on about how, he's the former development director for Ogden City, but Ogden City's done very well increasing their tax base and their taxable value that the cities bring, the city up there brings in by doing overlay like this, but not allowing residential in those existing areas, but converting it into commercial. But then if you have an overlay and they're allowing residential in that mixed-use area.
There's another benefit to doing this, too. One of the bills that was passed in the legislature this session, dealing with development agreements. It does say in there that you cannot, a city cannot do a development agreement or to require a development agreement if, and there's three conditions or three standards in there, and one of them is if the use is permitted or conditional in the zone. And if we have this zone and we have allowed dwellings, in this case as a conditional use, right?
Then we couldn't do mixed.
If someone wanted to do that, but we wanted to, you know, make it fit better or do something, we, we couldn't require that there be a development agreement. If we have that option, though, as an overlay zone, which is a legislative action, we do have the option to do a development agreement with that. So that improves the situation even more to eliminate this language out of that central commercial zone.
Yeah, so it is allowed in central commercials, you can see. And then our mixed-use overlay zone requires a development agreement. So you, you cannot get that zone changed without a development agreement. And, and that, right, that gives us the opportunity to say yes or no to a project, or yes, but you have to make these changes. So, so I think, I think what you're saying, Wilf, like in twenty, if the Ogden Clinic came to us now and wanted to rezone to general commercial, it's a permitted use, we wouldn't have been able to require them to enter into a development agreement because it's permitted use. But if they were willing to, we can.
Sure, yeah, if they were willing to.
Yeah.
And now, if you have the residential component to it, which would require an overlay, then you definitely could.
Making it easier. Okay.
Okay.
So it's a public hearing, right?
This is a public hearing. I was going to go there. Thank you for reminding me. This is a public hearing. If anybody's here to speak to this, we will open it up for public hearing. You have three minutes to speak.
Have you want to speak again?
Former Commissioner Hunt. Okay, seeing that there is nobody here to speak on this issue, we will close the public hearing and go back into commission business.
And I don't have a slide, sorry, I don't have a slide saying the recommendation, but we are recommending approval of this.
Yeah.
Okay. So any further questions from the commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. Then I think we could entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we recommend to the city council that they modify the standards, or the, this is conditional uses, is that right?
Yes, sir, it's conditional uses. And all we're doing is removing the dwellings out of it.
We would modify the list of conditional uses in the central commercial zone to remove dwellings.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I second.
Aaron?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. I'll start the voting. Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll approve the minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty-four, planning commission. Does everybody have a time, chance to look at those in their packet?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes or amendments we need to make?
No.
Okay. So I have a motion to, we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, any, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's just do one vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number nine, other matters before the commission? That's up to the staff?
Yeah, we have registered everyone who was able to attend the training. Actually, there's, I think that's where Krista is this evening. Wasn't at the... Okay.
That's next, that's the week from tomorrow.
Okay.
A week from tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
I'm carpooling with Wilf.
Okay, so, oh, great.
What's that?
I'm carpooling with Wilf.
We're going to have to go early. We're leaving, we're going to go to Las Vegas first on Monday.
So we, we did get everyone registered that had requested, and... Aaron, you're for the APA, right?
Yeah. Okay, great. Other than that, I just would report that thankfully, I don't think we got hit too hard at this legislative session with some of the things we might, we thought we might.
Yeah.
The freight, the freight train stopped before it hit the house.
There are some things, but not, it's not as much as it could have been.
I was expecting, I mean, some of the chatter before session, I was expecting some major additions and revisions. And I think, I think they kind of held back. I mean, they, last year, they kind of took an axe to things.
Well, so the big things that did pass, they're all optional. They're establishing, like, there were the HTRZ zones. Now you can establish some other kinds of zones to, for affordable... Now you can establish some other kinds of zones to, for affordable housing and affordable, and ownership housing. And then, the incentive is that the city would get tax increment, get to keep some of the tax increment. So that's, those are the big bills. There's like three different programs that were passed that way, and then some infrastructure financing stuff. And those are, those are the big things. And then there were some, there were some modifications made to the LUDMA that'll affect what we do, but it's, it's not as much as it has been in past sessions or could have been. Yeah.
Actually, I just thought of one other thing I could report on, and.
If you're interested, tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, the League is going to, the League and APA together are gonna be doing a legislative update, and it's available on Zoom. It'll only be Zoom, as a matter of fact, now. So if you're interested in that, just go on the League's website. It's called their spring training session.
Oh, I saw that.
It's tomorrow at 9:00 AM.
So, this is kinda cool, and I'm gonna say Mindy put in a lot of work on this little webpage. But as we went through the process of approving the subdivision ordinance changes that the state law required us make, the council was concerned about not bringing those items to Planning Commission, mostly just wanting to keep the public informed. So they asked staff to create a forum. In lieu of bringing those to Planning Commission meetings, they asked staff to create a forum where we could communicate with the public about the subdivision applications that we have, and also provide an opportunity for them to comment. So we have a couple of applications right now that are actually from the city that we'll be posting here, I hope, next week. But we, we wanted to kinda communicate to the public, hey, now I have to take my glasses off because I'm reading far away, you know, that we'll accept comments. We are limited on preliminary plat to a 15-day business day turnaround on getting comments back. So our intent is, we get an application, determine it's a complete application, we'll take a day or two to get a summary of that application put together, added to the website, and then when it's on the website, we will go drop off a sign to the property like we do with our A-frames. But we ordered new signs that have a QR code. So that QR code will take you directly to this webpage. And then, as I said, you can, one of the, one of the things we wanted to communicate to the public, too, is that we can't deny subdivisions. If they meet code, we approve them. And also that most of the comments we get on subdivisions are just frankly irrelevant to the process because they're, we don't want this to change, we want it to stay rural, or.
There's too many cars.
Yeah, and that just isn't germane to, to what we can. Yeah, so, so we wanted to give a little bit of educational opportunity, like, if they're not federal laws, state laws, city code, or our standards, which these link to our codes and then our technical standards for infrastructure, if they're not related, if comments aren't related to that, we'll pass it along to the developer, but understand the developer has no legal obligation to be responsive to that, you know, to that comment. So we have this map, and then, you know, they, you say, "Oh, I drove past a sign in this location." This would take you to the, then the summary of. And those, right, those, doctor, that's just for our notification for our rezones and things that we've got on our agendas. However, once there is a subdivision that is relevant to this process, it will be a different color so that you can determine the difference between.
Well, that's how the cities do it, I mean, I think it's great.
And then we'll have, so we'll have this summary, right? Subdivision name, address, applicant owner, blah, blah, blah. And then we'll have these attachments that'll just pop up the plat as, as it's proposed. And then over here on the right-hand side is the comment form. And so this comment form, similar to how our public comments for our public hearings are distributed automatically to you, this will be distributed automatically to your community development staff, to your public works director, and then our city engineer, which we are going to be utilizing in a temporary manner, an engineer from JUB to help us get through the interim until we can replace Dexter, who left us about three weeks ago. So this is, I think, a pretty cool thing. And we also, you know, committed to the council that even if there is a comment that gets submitted that's not relevant to code standards, we would, as staff, respond back to the public and just say, "Hey, we've got this." Or, you know, "Here's where you could take that comment." Or, you know, I mean, a lot of times, actually, it's like, that's a civil issue between two private property owners, and the city doesn't get involved. So I wouldn't anticipate that we receive a lot of comments that would really be ones that the developer would have to respond to. That's our job as staff, right? And, and it's a very technical thing. So most people wouldn't have the knowledge to look at a plat and see if there's an issue, right? And that's really where you rely on your professional staff to look at that. But nonetheless, we also committed to the council that we will give those comments to a developer. And if they wanna address them, obviously, they can, but if they don't want to, we can't make them. But this was a, this was a cool thing, and again, thanks to Mindy for all her work on kind of getting this way, this page set up and the comment form, and even getting that distribution list added. So I anticipate that this will be a process that we'll probably tweak many times over, as we, you know, have an application come in and work through that. I think that there's probably gonna be little bugs and things in the process that we'll wanna work out, but. Yeah, and our, Cindy Mansell, who does reporting with the City Journal, is gonna do a write-up about this and let the public know that this will be here for them to comment.
Good.
And then we also, I, I think in the end, the council also wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission and that the city council themselves received those comments. So I think what we will end up doing is just loading up that packet that we send off to the developer with all the comments, probably loading that up to this website, and then it'll be accessible up there for a period of time. And anyone who's interested, whether it's a resident or planning commissioner, can go and just look at that information.
That's great.
Oh, and then I should have said, so we anticipate, right? We'll get that sign on the property within the first day or two, and then have a comment period open for approximately 10 days. And then we'll take that down a day or, you know, a day or two, three days before the end of the 15 business days so that we can compile all the comments and get that back to the developer. So we'll have about 10 days on, you know, kind of in the middle of that day one and day 15, where the opportunity will be there for the public to comment.
That's great. Good way to do that. Nice work, Mindy.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
All motion to adjourn.
So move, let's go.
Yep.